Okay, we'll start opening the meeting. Please stand for this time in regent. How about we have high school, middle school students on the pledge of allegiance tonight? Go ahead.
(Inaudible) The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we always do, we'll have a moment of silence for the safety fairing of Colin Gillis and for his family. Okay, public comment period. Who would like to start off tonight? Yes, sir.
I was wondering if Patty Littlefield has contacted you guys about replacing the light bulbs down at Park. Has there been anything?
Mike?
Yes, we've been in touch with the town and Patty and the all the material to have those lights changed over to LEDs instead of the high-pressure soliums which are going to become unavailable shortly. The material's been ordered, the town is going to pay for it, and our guys are going to swap it out as we go. We're not going to do it all at once, but we're going to swap out every light there to an LED as we get time and the weather permitting. So it has been addressed. It'll probably take, you know, it might take most of the winter to get them all changed because of the weather and where it is, but it is in the process. And I think there's only a couple left that are out right now.
And there will be dark skies to go along the ditches.
Thank you very much.
Paul, I'm not really sure that this is the place to address this or not, but I'm not impressed with these people that are putting their water meters in. They called, we made an appointment, they were supposed to come. We tore our bedroom apart so we could get in the trap door so they could get in the crawl space. No call, no show.
It's the first real issue I've had with it, Mark.
The other one was...
We really aren't in charge of how they're...
No, I know.
I mean, they're doing that.
No, I understand. Well, certainly...
Yeah, I'm not reflecting this back onto our water and sewer.
No, I understand.
But I'm just letting the village know that this is some of the stuff that's going on, and I'm not the only one. Fred Monet had the same issue.
He made an appointment and they didn't show?
Didn't show.
I'll check on it first thing in the morning.
All right, thank you.
I'll call Mary, we'll call them first thing in the morning and find out why.
What's your number, address on Water Street?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay.
And they haven't come back yet?
Nope. They're not coming back until spring now. We got water in the crawl space.
Yeah, okay. Well, I will find out why. I'm glad you told me I didn't... No. Yes, sir?
My name is Kevin Hammond. I'm a proud resident of Tupper Lake, New York. Come from St. Lawrence County. Worked for Carhartt Clothing for over thirty years as a financial consultant and design master in all the United States. I'm telling you, Tupper Lake has a lot of potential. A lot of potential. I go down to the water line every morning and every night. So much, so much, so much. Now, I'm here to see the River Pigs. I'd love to see development here in this town. This is not just a pass-through town to go to Albany, New York, or Lake Placid. You need people to stop here and confront our tax base. There's so much here, so much here. I'd like to recommend or commend the electrical department. I've seen two outages, or maybe three, since I've been here. I've had my power up and running in an hour and a half. Really, it's an honor to be here tonight. You guys got so much to give, so much, so much. Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
One of the best tenants in Tupper Lake right now.
That's a good name.
How about the seniors? Any questions for us right now, or you just want to listen right now and we'll go over it after when I sign all your papers? How's that? Okay. Okay. So, really, tonight, our board is happy to have Ed Gonzalez, who's with the Empire League, and Matt Joyce, who is associated with the Empire League and is a player for the Atlanta Braves. They came up, we went through the, we went over the ball field today, and David, why don't you carry on from there what we did, then we'll have Matt give us a rundown, or Ed and Matt give us a rundown on what we're looking at for next spring.
What we did this year with the volunteers, we have a committee that's on, the River Pig Committee, we call them, it's Jed, Joyce, our trustees, Ron, and there's Jay and Ricky Skiff. We went down there, we don't want no pat on our backs, we're working, we got the sod laid down this summer, and we just finished building the two dugouts. The two dugouts were covered, they're in-ground dugouts, they were covered for twenty years. They were filled in with clay. We got them all dug out, we built, we built the dugouts back because we got the River Pigs coming to play for us. And what the River Pigs are about, I'll let Eddie Gonzalez talk to him and Matt Joyce.
First, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for welcoming us like if this was our home all along, okay? I'll just give you a briefing on what the Empire League is, and we'll leave the rest up to you. So basically, Empire League primarily focuses on helping the young men, especially in these areas in these regions, that don't have the exposure tools to move on in their careers or to even take that first step into a pro baseball career, okay? I don't know about you guys, but who's the last person from around here or the whole region or in the Northeast that you see these guys getting drafted by Major League Baseball or having an opportunity to really achieve and succeed in pro sports? And so, in a nutshell, that's why the Empire League was created. It's a league that's designed to help develop and mold the young men that come out of college or that get released from lower level, beginner level, minor league, professional baseball throughout the country. These are guys that are hungry, that are not ready to move on with their lives and get married and have kids or get to eight to five, nine to five jobs. They want to pursue a baseball dream. And so, I took that as an opportunity to grab a great vision that we have of providing a great, positive, influential thing like baseball. And we're giving it back to them, you know? The community can benefit from it, the youth have this love vision of getting kids away from drugs and out and back out on the field or getting kids out of their video game addictions. They're in the video games all day long and get back out on the fields and play in the sand lots. And if they have local support or a local venture that they can look up to, like a local team and something to cheer for, I think it not only benefits the positivity for the youth, but also bringing a community together, which I think it has, I think we've all seen it. It's not some miracle that we pulled off. We just love baseball, we love communities, and we love children, and we're just putting our love together into this. And an opportunity came about where, hey, we have a baseball field here that needs some using. Can baseball happen here? And I said, well, let's see if we can. And without a doubt, it took one visit. My family loves this town, we've been here and we just, my wife didn't even want to leave last time, especially after all your gifts.
Flashlights.
Out of the flashlights.
Oh, really?
Those kids are still going with the flashlights. But Matt's got one now.
It actually works?
He's got a working one, believe it or not.
Don't count on tomorrow, man. Must have them say.
But, you know, that whole vision, like I said, it's not possible without a great supporting cast and the desire of people that want to step behind this and support it. And it got nothing to do with what we've done. All we can do is thank you guys for loving the sports and in the sport of baseball, for wanting something like this here, and it's all about you. Hopefully, it's for you and for the community and for the children, and we'll get to live our passion, sharing baseball, spreading the, that's basically how we spread our love and the good news. It's baseball, kids, solid foundation for the future and fun, affordable entertainment right here. And like the gentleman said, I love what you said, so thank you so much for your love and support. This isn't just an avenue to get somewhere else. Maybe we can help build and continue to grow this community and get the housing that we need and some, open up some hotels and more restaurants and make this place a real, true tourist attraction. I can, you know, I can go on and on with the smiles that this would bring, you know, but I love the ideas and I love whatever little bit of a role we can play in it through baseball, through the Empire League, through our charity and our foundation work and everything we're doing and we've done. For those of you that don't know, with the veteran assistance that we've done for the North Country Honor Flight, donating thousands of dollars every year, even if it hurt us, you know, we've always been about everybody else and the kids, and we want to continue doing that. And so, I want to thank my partner, Matt. He's very busy throughout the year while I put on this work, but he believes in the vision and he loves baseball. And while he's out there hurting some of you guys with home runs at Shea or Yankee Stadium, we apologize. It's not intentional, it's just a job, trust me. He has to do it, okay? But he sees the vision and the love that we have and this stuff is, you know, it has a cost, and it costs a lot, it takes a lot of funding to be able to execute and operate the things that we're doing. And so, being able to kind of have this kind of support where it's not so heavy on us and we're able to work together as a unit for the community and put the stadium in the standard that it is now, what you guys have done, is tip of the cap to you guys. So again, thank you so much, Matt. I don't know if you have anything else to say, but...
Thank you, Neil. That was very well said. Don't let him fool you. He works his butt off. Eddie does a lot every single day. He's non-stop, man. He's non-stop talking to people, trying to figure out and solve the issues, how we can better provide value to the community, how we can help the kids really chase their dream a little bit better. And this is a perfect fit. This is really nice to see the community get behind us and support us because there's a lot of good that comes along with it. And, you know, we're excited to be partnered with you guys to come in here and have your help and your support with the stadium. It's going to be fun. It's going to be fun to see the process and the journey and how we can grow this thing. I think, like you said, there's a lot of potential in this town, and it's pretty cool to come here for the first time and see how beautiful and how much there is to offer. So like I said, we're excited and really honored to be a part of it.
Hopefully, we all toast together in that stadium on game one.
Woo!
Thank you, guys.
I just wondered if anybody had a question or two? I think they'd answer a couple.
Absolutely, if you have a question.
Anybody's got a question? Peter?
Who's your first, I was going to ask this, who's your first game against or you don't know yet?
That is being finalized, actually, right now. Usually, this is about the time of the year when the schedule on behalf of the league is finalized.
Yeah.
But we have some interest in some other nearby franchises that we're looking into possibly joining the Empire League, and so that kind of put a little hold on finalizing the schedule, but it's getting close.
Good.
And I would tell you this, it's probably a division team.
Yep.
So you could start thinking of possibly a Plasberg or a Serenac Lake for an opening series.
Yep.
So it's, I'm just throwing that out there, don't quote me on it, but it'll be exciting from the get-go.
I suggest...
We're looking forward to it.
Plus fireworks.
Matt, can I get a job? Can I get a job as a bat boy?
You sure can, baby. We might be...
I'm at that age, what?
We'll have to test your squad down to pick up the bat skills, okay?
We'll wait until after the game.
Too much, huh?
We gotta get him a golfer.
I got a picker, I'll let him.
How many teams will be in the league, do you think?
Right now, for sure, there are six, but the league could expand and grow to eight teams. We don't know if it's going to happen for 2020, 2021. As you guys may have heard, some leagues are leaving one league to join others. Major League Baseball is looking into doing a crazy cut of minor league teams, including possibly, we don't know if it's 2021 or when, but the New York Penn League might be taking a hit. I mean, there's some leagues that are going away, so the Empire League could be the next big thing in this region. And a franchise starting from the ground up like the River Pigs are could be a huge, huge impact for this community. So, it's exciting, this is all, you know, it's all God's work too, man. This is amazing, this is, everything being, happening, it's lining up in a way that I can't describe it, so I can't answer that one too well, but it's going to be good.
Well, welcome home.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having us.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the River Pigs for coming to Tupper Lake. Also, it ain't just about the River Pigs. It's about our future of tomorrow, our kids and our grandkids. We've got great facilities here. We've got great people running these facilities. Just unbelievable. I walk down there every morning, I walk down there every night, and I look at it, I'm like, wow, I wish I had this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you so much.
I think we can make it work. I really do. And thank you for the village for supporting this issue.
Absolutely.
Really, I thank you all.
Gentlemen, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, gentlemen. You're welcome to stay or go to our meeting. I've been asked to expedite it tonight. We'll get right through it.
Just tell me where the chicken went. I'm ready for one of those, at least.
You're not the only one. So, we thank you, and David, Ron, and Jeb, and everybody, who else? Royce?
Yeah.
For working this out. Appreciate it.
Glad to be part of it.
Okay. Moving on, I need a motion to reappoint Jan Yaworski to the Village Town Planning Board for an additional five-year term. She can't be here tonight, she's at a planning board meeting. Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Maroon, discussion?
I talk to Jan quite often. I think she's an asset to the planning board. I'm glad that she's there, and I'm happy to reappoint her for some time.
All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. For the seniors, if one of our members doesn't vote no, he's recorded as a yes. A lot of times, some of my board members don't talk too much during the meeting, so they want to remind you that they voted yes for these things. Okay. I also need authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding with a rise for the purpose of accepting a matching fund grant for the local water redevelopment.
Motion.
Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Hollingsworth, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. The 12th Annual Chad Martin Tree Lighting Ceremony will be held earlier this year on Saturday, November 30th at 5:00 p.m. at the site. We did it a few years ago at the intersection of Mill Street and Park Street. All are welcome to attend. Next year, we will have it over here in the corner where the old sports shop used to be. That, the state is letting us use that. In fact, they're going to turn that little lot over, but we're going to make it a little, very mini park with some seats there to be able to do that. So I just want to make you all aware of that. The minutes are in your packets. I need a motion to approve the minutes of October 16th and November 1st.
Motion.
Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Hollingsworth. Any additions or amendments? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Code enforcement, Peter?
Yes. Building permits issued last month were fourteen. Site inspections, sixty-two. Phone complaints, four. Certificate of its compliance issued, four. Building code related, sixty-one. Zoning issues, twenty-two. Dig requests, two. Office-related activity, eighty. Two violations issued. And also, I do want to issue a public reminder to the community, it is that time of the year. Make sure your smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors have batteries and are working. And also, on another note, I don't know if Cliff, do you want me to give the zoning code up?
Yeah, you can. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, our little committee meeting, you know, between the two boards, we had a couple members that we have on it met tonight, and we hashed out some more of the things, and that'll be coming up in public soon. We may meet again one more time or just correspond with some emails, but eventually, it's going to go, the next phase, we send the draft code to the planning board for review, and the attorneys would weigh in on it, and they would make some recommendations, and then officially, they will pass it on to either, the both, Town and Village Board, and then there'll be some more public comment periods for the boards to, or public, for the public to weigh in, so. So there's still a ways to go on it, yeah, but...
There is some movement, at least.
Yes. And I got one more issue.
Wait, excuse me. Oh. Okay, go ahead, Peter.
The mayor and I sit on the rail trail committee, and I just want to make an announcement, I know it's been in the papers, but we're finally, things are moving forward in a positive direction, especially for Tupper Lake. And on December 3rd, 6:00 p.m. at the high school auditorium, they're having a public comment period on it. And again, I urge anybody, if they want to go to the DEC website and look at announcements, I think under that heading, you'll see the rail trail announcements, but the entire plan is there, right down to historic mitigation, the signage and how everything worked out. This is the most well-put-together plan, and again, Tupper, every community along the corridor is going to benefit. Tupper Lake's going to have the luxury of having train service and trail service to our community, but it's about time, good things are finally moving in the right direction.
There's also a hearing, if you can't make the 3rd, December 4th in Lake Placid at 6:00.
Yes.
Where are a lot of people?
I want to vote...
But it's on the website.
Lake Placid Conference Center.
Oh.
Right at the...
Right at the...
Six to eight.
I can send it to you later, copy.
Yeah.
And on December 5th, it's in Old Forge at the View Arts Center.
Yeah.
Or Old Forge, excuse me.
Need a motion to accept this report.
Anything else, Peter?
No, that'll be it, thank you.
Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Hollingsworth, opposed? I, the ayes have it. Okay, chief, how are you? You're undercover tonight.
I'm real undercover.
You don't even hear me.
You're going to miss me, mayor.
Okay.
Barrel's excited. Wait for your fire truck, you're next.
Go ahead, Ken. Go ahead.
Cover 2019 report, patrol vehicle mileage, five zero one zero twenty-eight, five zero one one, twenty-seven hundred, five zero one two six sixty-three, total of three five ninety-one. Total incidents, one hundred eighty-four. We had three open doors, eight rescue call assists, six utility companies, three assists to the New York State Police, and seven accidents, five owners, three subpoenas served, and fifteen complaints. If you also look through your packet, if you look in the penal law section in the reports, there was some pretty significant investigations that were conducted and are still going on, and it's involving a ton of time and injury right now. I think you're a little old, but I guess they asked that you accept the report.
Motion to approve the report. Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Maroon. Additions or corrections? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
As you're aware, we need to formally accept Connor Castlestein's resignation, which was effective November 13th.
Your motion?
Motion.
Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Hollings...
I said regretfully.
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 Discussion?
Connor was a great police officer, and a young police officer that came to our department. With Leon and I went down and watched him graduate, he served this community with honor and of the highest standards he could ask somebody to be a police officer in a small community, and quite frankly, it sucks to lose him, you know?
Yeah, he's moving closer to home.
He's moving close to family, him and his wife, they want to have a young family. He can't knock the guy. Whoever's getting him is getting a really good police officer, for sure.
Well, they don't. They're paid for.
Yeah, they'll have to pay, just so everybody knows, we send our officers to school under municipal law, they have to stay with us for three years. If they don't, they pay us back proportionate, and in the new contract that we signed last year, they were with us five years. So, the village and alone will be paying us something. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
We had discussed last meeting about the handicap parking change out from here down in Main Street, and we did get the public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we're going to ask you to have the public hearing set for the next meeting, December 18th at 6:00 p.m., to finalize those.
That would be to move what we've talked about, a handicap spot here and moving one down in Main Street in the junction part of town. DOTs come up, I went with them, we looked at it, they're all in favor of it. We just need to go through the legal process, and we'll do it on the 18th. Okay, chief?
These speed signs are in. I need to thank all of the firemen who are going to help out. The bottom up really, my only plea in it was to order the equipment. The other crews put it up, but they seem to be working well and they're well received. So, that's cool. The new police car will be here next week. I've ordered neon strafing with backlighting. It's going to be so lit up, mayor, that when the River Pigs have a night game, it'll light up the whole field. You'll know it's a police car.
You finally got your way, Mr. Mayor? I am very proud of you.
There's still dark sky to fly.
That would be an umbrella over a car.
Gentlemen, any questions for chief? Okay, thank you, chief. Fire, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Calls in the village, nine. Calls in the town, nine. Calls in Santa Clara, three. For a total of twenty-one. Types of calls, one appliance fire, seven alarm activations, one boat in distress, one vehicle fire, three trees on wires, two wires down, two trees down, one personal injury auto accident, one MVA, one assist EMS, and one alarm was accidental. We were paged out, but it was Serenac Lake's call. Average number of members attending, eleven, and the number of hours called was also eleven. Ask for motion to accept them.
Trustee Maroon, second. Trustee LaScala. Additions or corrections? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
No, just explain...
I'd also like to have approval on the conditional sale agreement for the purchase of our used fire truck from King Fire Department.
I've discussed this with the board members. This is going to help us keep our contract with Santa Clara. This will go up to Santa Clara. It's a smaller, I don't mean to dig on you, but it's a smaller chassis. I've talked to the supervisor up there, they're going to increase their, hopefully increase their contract, and this will service Santa Clara for quite a while, and it'll extend the contract that we have. We have a five-year contract with Santa Clara, so this will be good for our contract with them. Is, let's see, we need a motion for this, Mary? Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Maroon. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Anything else, chief, Mr. Williams?
Our new emergency service design was recently put into place and now operational. I'd like to thank the electric crew and Bob's crew for installing it, taking the time to do it. It's been two years in the making, and it's been well-received so far. I'd also like to say thank you to Mike and his crew from the storm, the windstorm that we had. It was real appreciative, you guys were pretty much following us wherever, and it's great to have a working relationship with them, that they're there and a timely mayor to help us, so.
Thank you, chief. Questions for the chief? DPW.
Well, both chiefs took what I was going to say. It had about speed signs and LED signs, so. Uh, so we're just plowing snow and sand.
Building a skating rink.
We're gonna think about building a skating rink, it's, it's cold.
Uh, just usual winter- Winter, winter operations are in progress.
Like, the one thing that isn't on here, uh, I'd like to get you guys permission to, I've talked to y'all about, uh, ordering a new sand truck. Ours is in bad shape, so I'd like to get it ordered. We'll take ownership after June 1st of this year. If I could.
Sure.
We've had that conversation.
We've had that conversation.
Well, we approved your budget process, so it's been approved, but it wouldn't be bad for you guys to ratify it, and I will get a-
A motion.
Trustee LaScala? Trustee Hollingsworth. Further discussion? We discussed it before.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Hollingsworth. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Bob, anything else?
Got it for me, thank you.
Bobby, for Bob.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, trustee.
Bobby, they're giving things away today. Get something. You just did. Not enough.
That's not more for your friend.
Give them a job here. Uh, Mark, water and wastewater?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we got a quote for further well development. We're looking, we'd like to drill the well uptown. We got a quote from, uh, Claude Cormier, who did the well development, down at Pickford. And if you could review and prove that, uh, that bit.
Let me just explain it a little bit. We wanted to do our wells up on the, uh, beyond Larkin Ave, was leading with that stream?
Glenwood.
Glenwood, and, uh, for there was some time that some of the owners didn't want us to do it. We thought it was a better place than where we were because it was very close to the water mains. It was also, uh, a bigger, we think, pool of water, but we didn't get it, so we went to the western part of the community. Now, there's a new ownership there, and they are letting us drill for the wells, and hopefully that this will, if we can hit water, we will have, what DEC wants us to have was underground water, all underground, no more surface water because the contaminants are less, and we have to use less chemicals. So, we're very hopeful that this will work, and we need a motion from Trustee LaScala.
Yes.
Second, Trustee Hollingsworth. Further discuss- I think we need a shot. It's Ron, it's Trustee LaScala's.
I, I have high hopes for this site. I think if we're gonna find water, if we find water there, it's, it's really gonna clean up the rest of our water system. Right now, we're taking water out of an open water source, bringing it down, pumping it full of crap, excuse my language, but it's basically what it is. We end up with a byproduct that's not really great, and so the state has changed the standards. Now, we've been working on this forever, but we still have this one water source that we don't want. We get this water source, we'll have some sources of water coming from multiple spots in the village from different sides, so if one gives us trouble, we can still pick up the, the difference from the other side. Um, I think, I think this is a great opportunity. I hope it works out for us, and if it does, I think that it'll put an end to our water issues once and for all. And I thank Mark for all the hard work they've done. They've done a lot of early warning phone calls between Mark and I, trying to figure this out and get it done for two years, and, well, this is exciting to Mark and I.
Hopefully, we have the water and the quality of water down there, in Glenwood, in both.
Okay, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
And, uh, number two, formerly ratified change order for North Country Contracting. They did the loop from Route 3 over to Larkin Ave. They haven't charged it yet. They'll be here tomorrow to flush it, chlorinate it. Um, they need, you know, the department help to clear, clear the new water.
Right.
And when they get that, then they can put it online, which will take care of the dirty water on Route 3.
Right.
And they're, no longer getting that, the water will flow continually through-
Okay.
-through that loop, the uptown loop. They're cleaning up the water.
Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Hollingsworth. Further discussion? Questions? Uh, this, this should help the motels past the ball field where we stood out today on Route 3 for the marsh pool. Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
One other quick thing, the, the water meters, who David mentioned. A few people are having trouble with their hot water heater relief valve blowing. With the water meter, they have a check valve built into them. You have pressure building above the meter, and it can't relieve, you know, without that relief valve blowing. Um, if people have the meter put in already, and they have an issue with the water heater blowing, relief valve letting go, call the village. We will go, and we can remove that check valve out of the meter. It'll take care of that problem. Not all people are having the issue, only a few handfuls, and I don't know why. Hydraulically, I don't, I don't get it, but-
Well, we call you to come remove it, or ask us.
Could you guys do it?
Well, we're gonna-
Not all people are having the trouble.
You gotta call-
We have, we have fine issue, we have, we have fine issues-
One neighborhood.
In, 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 in one neighborhood, and we're gonna discuss it some more. Uh, but there, there are things that we can do to prevent it.
Yeah.
I mean, we can put, uh, expansion tanks. And, uh, but, you know, you're technically speaking, your hot water tank should relieve the pressure, and if it's doing that, then, you know, come fix it. But sometimes, the, the relief valve is not working properly, and it's breaking the tank. And, and that, and I think that's the bigger issue. I don't, I don't wanna see anybody's home damaged because we came in and put water meters in. That's what I was hoping to discuss later on, um, once we get a little bit more of a clarification of what's causing this. I think what's causing it is, uh, it's happening with the hot water tanks specifically, is that the, the, getting a thermal transfer, the, the water's building up, and heat builds, heat expands. Uh, and you have no place for it, for it to go without check valve before. It needs to go directly back into the village water system. Um, it's, it's an issue, and I, I don't know if we should wait for somebody's tank to go, or should we get out in front of it and put one in everybody's home, which is-
Yeah, I do have a bunch of orders where we've had trouble.
You know?
For me, but-
It's a, it's an expense. It is an expense, and it's certainly, I mean, you have people that were putting meters on in their, in their homes, and they're on the floor right now. And they, so they got a, they, they left their hot water, their hot water tank on, their water on, it's got pressure to it, right? And you're gonna get thermal transfer, and now, now it's blowing off, and they're not at home.
Yeah, we just take the check valve out for now?
We are.
You wanna do it?
We are for now, but technically speaking, the check valve's in there, so we're not double counting water.
Right, you want the water one direction.
Do we get the problem? We oughta take it out.
So we are, we are working on it. We've had the engineers, the consultants look at it, and just, I wanna remind everybody again, this was not this village board's issue. The state mandated us to do this, and I wanna remind for the press again, we have no intention, and as long as I'm mayor, we won't raid, we won't meter water. We're, we're doing well with our, with our water-
Flat rate.
Rate, and, uh, there's no intent to do that, but I had no choice because the state ordered us to, or we couldn't extract water out of the wells. So, we are working on this problem. Ron's on it, and, uh, we meet regularly. We'll find, we'll get it, we'll get it squared away. But, if anybody has an issue, call village office, and we'll be out there.
Welcome to New York.
Anything else, Mark?
No, I'm good.
Questions for Mark, any? Electric, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, we need to formally ratify change order for the municipal electric garage project as follows. Renamed change order, G C 10 for a decrease of 953.43 for modification of door hardware, and G C 11 for an increase of $20,310.60 for a mechanic's day entrance. Confirmed change order, P C 03 for a decrease of $865 for removal of plumbing fixtures.
Trustee Hollingsworth, second. Trustee LaScala. Discussion? All those in favor of change orders? Say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Pretty good.
Need to formally approve the fiscal year-end May 31st, 2019, New York Power Authority report for the municipal electric department.
Motion. Trustee Hollingsworth, second. Trustee LaScala. Everyone's read it or looked at it? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. No contempt.
No, not this long, probably.
And just for the, just for the seniors who are here, and for our friends with the baseball league, uh, Tupper Lake is very fortunate. We have our own municipal electric system. So if you lived in Rochester, Serenac Lake, uh, Syracuse, you'd probably pay 14 and a half cents a kilowatt hour. Here, we pay 4.15 roughly. So it's, 4.35, so it's, it's, it's good, but we have a crew that's very dedicated, and, uh, it, it's, uh, it's good to have. Go ahead.
Um, we need authorization to write off a balance in the amount of $10.58 for a deceased customer.
Trustee Hollingsworth?
I got that, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Trustee LeBlanc? Trustee Howard, 3.45.
Thanks for the lead, Leon.
Thank you, thank you.
Discussion?
I know you're similar to us.
You're welcome. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Sorry, um, so, uh, as you know, everybody else has asked for some other things tonight. I guess I'm just last on the list, but mine's a long ways away. Uh, so eventually, we're gonna need to replace, uh, a bucket truck. This is probably, uh, 14 months away. It's at least a year to build it, and I would like permission from the board to pursue that. It will be a, uh, a partial hybrid bucket truck, and it would be a loan through, uh, the New York State Power Authority, just like the last truck that we have, at a 0% interest rate. And, uh, the payment basically is discharged out through the electric bill, kind of the way that the truck is right now. If the truck goes through, by the time it's built, uh, you would basically be done paying for the truck that we have and start the next truck payment after that. The last truck that we have is early 2000, and it's getting very difficult to find parts for it, unfortunately. It's still running, and, uh, we intend to keep it as long as we can, but we need to make that move and pursue the next one.
So you need a motion from us tonight, or you just wanted to-
Yeah, and then that way I can, that way I can, uh, get a formal quote from the manufacturer and send that quote to the power authority for approval for the loan.
Trustee Hollingsworth, second. Trustee Maroon. Uh, further discussion? We will move ahead with this. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Relax.
Okay.
So all the walkway lights, we had a little bit of discussion on that. Um, the, uh, all the walkway down there, they're all high-pressure sodium lights, which are gonna be, come unavailable very soon.
Right.
Uh, they don't make them anymore. So, uh, between the town and us, our guys will do all the, uh, the labor, swap it over, and the town has agreed to pay for the material to do that job.
Okay.
So it's already been ordered, and like I said, we'll work it out throughout the winter when the days aren't, you know, 30 mile an hour wind out there, or when we can, we'll, uh-
You already hit a run with that 30 mile an hour wind blowing off across the lake.
We'll swap it out every time.
Oh, you could do it.
Well, some people just close their eyes and swing really hard. It happens.
It's hard, that's how he did it.
Oh, that's hard, Paul. But just a note on the walkway for everybody, uh, we are almost in the process of, of getting the title to the, to the complete walkway. The town has title to it now, uh, and we're in the process of assuming title will have it shortly. So that'll all be village. It'll all be one, instead of having to work with the town and the village on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna end up with the docks, too?
We are going to get the docks, I believe, right, Mary?
I don't know.
We don't know yet. We're working on it.
We want the docks.
What are they gonna do with them?
We're going around, we're going around them out and make money for the ball field.
They can just give, give us the docks, and they'll take care of it.
I think we're gonna get them, okay? Okay, uh, Mike, I, I too just wanna thank you for that, you and the chief with the party department, everybody, actually, but during that windstorm. Did a great job.
That's my miscellaneous update also.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the park department, PD.
Everybody.
And, um, all my guys, uh, very young, new crew. They did great.
Thank you.
They did a great job. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, thank you for your leadership. It certainly, uh, has paid off for us. We're enjoying it.
Mike, do you have anything on that?
I think everybody said I was gonna bring it up, but we'll leave you to it, and-
Sorry.
And, uh, yeah, I mean, the, the crews were out, what, through, through?
There was a time where it was quite a straight stretch, 16 hours.
We started about midnight on a Thursday, and we got done about, the, well, we, we got sort of done about 10 o'clock Friday, and so 22 hours.
And then went back in at 6:00 in the morning, right, on Saturday. Put some hours in to, to, you know, keep our community safe and keep us with power.
Sure. Okay. Mary, treasurers report.
We'd like permission to pay the bills, the amount of a million, just $101,257.42, and also approve the abstracts for the month of October.
We're not paying the bills as much.
I don't think you're saying that.
I have a plaque that takes you down.
Went to come in my ears for this, poor man.
We got some heavy projects going on, and, you know, and, um, and our New York State Tire and Bus Sales-
Okay.
That's $400,000.
Okay. Is there more? Uh, Trustee LaScala, second. Trustee Hollingsworth. Uh, the bills have been in your packets. Any questions? Additions, deletions? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm sorry. Um, also, I have the New York State Comptroller's report there. You guys could formally approve that, or it's all been filed for fiscal year-end May 31st.
And there were no discrepancies, I may add.
No, everything's good.
Uh, Trustee LaScala, Trustee Maroon, second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
And, uh, everyone's got the cash position as of October 31st?
Yeah. We are going to need a very brief executive session. Uh, it'll be brief, I mean, we may have to, we may postpone it, but I just want, just need a couple of minutes of your time, and we'll be out of here. Motion to adjourn the regular meeting. I make a motion. Thank you.